Order and begin with the pledge of allegiance.
.........................................................
Roll call David Bova here, Eric Bosler. He's here.
What?
Are you here?
You hear? No, what'd you say?
Geraldine Diesel.
Here.
James Kirshner.
I'm here.
Martha Riesinger.
Yes, here.
Richard Rudolph.
Here.
Terrence McDaniel.
Yes, here.
All present and accountable for our. Next on the agenda are the Board of Education norms, which are available on the Board Docs website. And next we have approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve the agenda of the November 16th, 2001 Regular Session Meeting.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have approval of the consent agenda.
Moved to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Per policy BDDH-1, public participation for board-- at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures we followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the Board President. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, the public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I do not have any public comment cards.
I do not either.
Right. Next on the agenda, we have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, this month, I put a copy of the presentation that I'm going to present here under item 4A. So that way, the public has access to it. We've been trying to determine where to put it, so we're going to try it there for right now. Um, the first item on my report... The first item on my report, notes of appreciation. Those are located in Board Docs for you to review. The second item is to go over the numbers from parent-teacher conference. This is a summary from each building. Bloomsdale Elementary, pre-K through grade 5. The number of students with a parent or guardian participating in conferences was 245. Their enrollment is 262. So they had 93.5% participation. St. John Elementary, pre-K through grade 5. They had 483 parents' guardians participating. They have an enrollment of 511 students, so they had 94.5% participation. At the middle school, we had 182 parents' guardians participating, enrollment 417. So they had about 43 point, if you round up, 7%. High school, 181 participants, enrollment of 547, so they actually had 33.1% participating. If you look at the data from last year, you see that Bloomsdale and St. John Elementary pretty much stayed the same. Middle school fell off just a little bit, but the high school did have a nice jump. Last year, they had a very low participation number, so it's good to see that rebound. So these are our numbers from parent-teacher conferences. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, the next item on my report is the principal reports. So I think we will start with Mrs. Zuespin.
Aye.
Hopefully, I can make it through this month. Um... Okay, thank you. Okay, we've been pretty busy this month. October is always a busy month for us, um, with Red Ribbon Week and parent-teacher conference, and we threw in a family fun night. We had a really good turnout. We had, um... It was a really cold night, so we had originally like 335 people scheduled to show up, but only about 270 showed up. So we had a lot of extra chili the next day and hot dogs, but that's okay. We enjoyed them in the teacher's workroom. We prepared a meal for them, and we were planning on eating outside at the picnic tables, but I couldn't make them eat outside on a 35-degree night. So we brought them in the cafeteria to feed them chili and hot dogs. We had a bonfire. We had hayride. We had a picture booth. We had the fire department there for the bonfire, and they... That picture shows them putting it out really well at the end of the night. They also monitored-- monitored it during the family fun night to make sure no one got too close to it. But we had a really good time. We had yard games as well. We passed out glow sticks. We had music, so it was a really good get-together for the families. Positive office referrals, we had quite a few this month. The teachers do a really good job of recognizing the students for the habit-- their habits or character ed. Starting at the top left-hand corner and going across is Ty Fears, Judd Cage, Garrett Winkler, Olivia Lang, Jessie Armbruster, Bowen Hager. And there were three kids from that kindergarten class. And in the next picture, the first kid with the mask on was late getting up there. So as soon as he came in, they... The other two started hugging him, so I had to take a picture of that. And I put them in there twice because that was so cute. They're such a little family in there. And then the last one on the top is Autumn Michelle. Go down to the left on the bottom is Clayton Webb, Claire Geisler, Livy Greer, and Anna Rhodes. We are full force in our second quarter. Wigs and lead measures, our focus is math and reading again this year. We talked about focusing on writing, but we still looked at our math NWEA scores and our math scores, and we decided to go with map-- math because it's really important that we improve math. So first, you identify your really important goals, or they call it wildly important goals. And then you take some action called your lead measures. These are kindergarten kids practicing their math every day, and they each have a different way to practice it based on their need. So it's even doable at kindergarten. And then they track their own scoreboard in their leadership notebooks, and they have a scoreboard in their classroom and out in the hallway. Just some general happenings at Bloomsdale. In the top left-hand corner is Jack Blue. He worked really hard in class and earned a whole bunch of dojo points. And their top reward was to work with the principal for some time that day, and he was so excited, and he was very professional. He's a first grader. He used 100 dojo points to work with me, and that's a lot of dojo points. So he was willing to give them up, and he went around each classroom, passed out treats, and he was very polite and professional. So he did a really good job. We had writing awards for Veterans Day, and I didn't put all their pictures. That's just a couple of grade levels, so I wanted to read those winners for the writing awards. Now, in pre-K and kindergarten, they wrote like one word and then drew a picture and colored it, and it was based on their coloring and their writing. In pre-K, it was Harper Schaefer, Everly Pelfrey, Gillian Hendricks. In kindergarten, Amanda Philkins, Aiden Johnson, Amelia Clements. In first grade, Connor Weiss, Owen Stafford, Sophia LaCamp. Second grade, Aubrey Nizoli, Cheyenne Jacobs, Hadley Lewis. Third grade, Haven Main, Jace Winkler, Jackson Brown, Madison Stomberg. In fourth grade, Lily and Kramer, Savannah Sinssusi. Fifth grade was Jackson Burr, Alice McConkey, and Charlotte Mies. And those writings are displayed in the hallway right now. We're going to leave them up until after Thanksgiving. At the top, the student on the computer, we have started coding club for 2nd through 5th grade students, and we were opening it up to whoever wanted to join. And we were hoping we wouldn't get too, too many, but we got a good number at 23 students signed up for coding club. So we started that last week. We're continuing to do wall of fame papers. That's a student really proud of his paper hanging up on the board. And then we're continuing to do like our golden trashcan award. The custodians nominate classrooms who have the cleanest classrooms at the end of the day and take care of their classroom. And we have a silver spoon award, which is in the cafeteria. Whoever uses good manners and cleans up after themselves, then they get an extra treat at lunch if they get nominated for that silver spoon award. And then that's our staff Halloween costume. We were all crayons, and we supposedly drew the picture of Coach that he had on him. We had some really sharp crayons and some really dull crayons, so it was a mixed box of crayons. And then we were super excited again to use our gold coins in our vending machine. Those kids with the gold coins are super excited, and they can't wait to pick a book out of that machine. We had, um... I had multiple class pictures that I couldn't fit up there, but Ms. Heberly met with them at a time and took their class pictures, and we're super proud of all the kids that met their reading goals. And that's it at Bloomsdale Elementary.
Good evening.
Good evening. Aye.
So at St. Genevieve Elementary, we started our robotics team back up with some new students for this school year. Mrs. Andrea Fritch, Mrs. Jonna Beckett, and Crystal Koenig are the sponsors for the team. They did an application process to make the robotics team, and we landed with some 4th and 5th grade students. Taylor Ellett, Tess Huffman, Michael LeClaire, Bailey Ram, Madeline Rissler, Kendall Coleman. 5th grade students, Lydia Brown, Chase Gek, Peyton Gek, Mayberry Jokers, James Roth, and Andrew Woodard. And they utilize part of their lead time, but that really doesn't allow them enough time to do everything they need to do to be able to do the robotics team. So they do meet some days after school to practice and build their robots, and they're using Ms. Koenig's room because it's a larger space where they can spread everything out and leave it out. So we're looking forward to see what they do with their robotics. Our 4th and 5th grade students participated in a career day towards the end of October. Mrs. Jessica Griminger, our guidance counselor, arranged for some community members to come in and speak to the students about various careers. I believe we had Amy Helvey, an aerospace engineer. Alicia Gek was an entrepreneur. John Rissler was a sergeant slash police officer. Dr. Lucifer was an eye doctor. Charles Drow was a storybook artist. Ricky Schaefer was a physician assistant, and Kyle Schaefer was an electrical engineer. And those guests volunteered their time to come in and speak to our students about their occupation and try to get them interested and excited about possible fields that they could go into as they move into middle school and high school and start to prepare for their careers. We, too, held a family fun night. Ours was a grades 3 through 5 family fun night. We did it outside towards late October. It was chilly, and it gets dark early in October, so we had to scramble to get some lights turned on and make sure that we had adequate lighting, but it all worked out. The teachers planned lots of fall activities with pumpkins and acorns and apples, but there were also literacy pieces in there with math and reading, and all the students were given a take-home book for their participation. It was very well attended. 3 through 5 typically isn't attended as well as the K to 2 one, but we did have quite a few parents. I think they were just excited to come out and be able to do something with their students again. We had a lot of positive office referrals since our last... What is this? Board meeting? I was going to say faculty meeting, but that wasn't right. So from the top, we have Jessica Harris, Avery Bailey, Xavier Hook, Lucy Wildhaber, Audrey Jokers. The middle row, Lydia Brown, Isaac Brokowski, Tess Richardson, Sadie DeVitz, Wyatt Schmelsley. And the bottom row, Charlie Hilbert, Owen Whaley, Hunter Wolk, and Andrew Woodard. These students were nominated for living the seven habits or just being good, good friends, good students, good community members, and so they are doing great things at our school. Here is a slide. The last week of October was very busy. Red Ribbon Week, Halloween parties, Sklastic Book Fair, parent-teacher conferences, all fell within a four-day school week. So it was very, very busy. We participated in the Red Ribbon Dress-Up Days. In the bottom left-hand corner, we have the preschool class wearing red to celebrate Red Ribbon Day. And then at the top, we have some various Halloween costumes from our parade. And at the top left, we have our first grade team. The share in our building, we've been doing some team challenges, and the October challenge was part of it. The teams had to come up with a costume, and they are vowel and the consonants, and they put on a rock concert for their kids during recess. So they won the spirit contest for the teachers. We also recently just did our first quarter awards presentation. Students gathered with their grade levels, and they were given like citizenship awards, honor roll awards, good behavior awards. Some of the grade levels did hard worker awards, and it... Once they received their awards, or if they didn't get one, they were able to go back with their teachers and set goals for second quarter to try to make sure that they achieve that for next quarter. And lastly, we celebrated our Veterans Day program, and we participated in the parade that was put on through middle school and high school. In the center there, we have our two MCs, Morgan Winch and Anya Naggar. They were the MCs for our student-led Veterans Day program, and they did an amazing job if you were able to make it. They... They were right on cue, and they didn't miss a beat. They... They knew their parts, and they knew it well, and they kept the program moving. And in the bottom left-hand corner, we have some 5th grade students who worked with Mrs. James and Mrs. Mudd to present the white table ceremony. That is for veterans or soldiers that are no longer with us. It's a very humble and solemn ceremony, and they do a very good job with that. And on the right-hand side, we have our pre-K to 5. I believe the ladies auxiliary hosted a coloring contest. So these were the coloring contest winners, and then they were able to lead the entire pack in the pledge of allegiance to start the program. And in the top left, it's just one of the pictures from our parade of our students with a banner that they had created. And I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Kingery and the rest of the Veterans Day committee. He worked really, really hard to pull this together, and he had Mrs. Beckett and Ms. Vioxx and Ms. Mudd, Ms. James, Ms. Hamnitz, Ms. Guile, Ms. Bowman, Haley Eddington. And I'm part of the committee, but I will say Mr. Kingery did the bulk of the work, so shout out to all them. They did a great job. And that's it at St. Genevieve Elementary.
So now we have St. Genevieve Middle School. And if you guys will look, just... This is just a quick snippet of October, minus a whole lot of other activity. If you'll look at the top left, we continue to have our spirit cape royalty every Friday. So we try to keep that green and white spirit alive, and it cracks me up because our kids are working hard for those capes. And they... They dawn them proudly. So you can see some of our latest royalty. If you look over on the right top, that is from our faculty costume contest, and I'm not sure when this tradition started. Did it start with you, Dr. Flee, or before you?
It was Dr. Taylor.
Dr. Taylor, gotcha. So we took the year off last year with our kids not in the building on Friday, and we let our kids have the fun, and everybody realized we were missing out on that fun. So we brought it back this year, and everybody brought their A-game. Our elective crew actually all teamed together because, you know, they're often on their own islands, and they were Ghostbuster. If you haven't seen the pictures, they did a pretty awesome job, and they actually took the cake of the contest. Down at the bottom, those are two pictures from our very first wings. And wings is a program that I believe was also there during Dr. Flee and Dr. Taylor's time at the middle school that had at some point, you know, was no longer. And whenever we were talking about our character initiative and restarting some programs and some rewards and different things, our teachers said, "We want this back, but we want to change a few things." So that's exactly what we did. So we got to celebrate many of our students getting their wings, dragon wings. Some people were missing out on that connection, but... And so technically, to get your wings, you can't have any Ds or Fs at what used to be a quarter cutoff, you know, grade cutoff. You can't have any Ds or Fs, no ISS, and no unexcused absences. So it's all about responsibility. It's all about taking pride in what you do. And so they got a free hour technically. And I had one rule, and it was one rule only, and I said, "I don't want to see a phone." Like, your job is to enjoy each other and have a good time, and they did. And it was... There was lots of board game playing, card game playing. There was some Twister going on, and a lot of just, just fun. They had a good time. And our teachers did, too. I know that I had some teachers pretty proud of taking some kids out and knockouts, so it was a good time. On the positive office referral front, my teachers made sure that our kids were recognized in October. So if you'll look at that list, I didn't even have room for my other picture of the rest of those students. It was... The neatest thing about this is these kids come into my office, and I'm able to recognize them, and we get to make it a big deal, and I always read it. I... I bring a bunch of them in at once because I'm like, "I want other kids to celebrate with you, too." And it's a really... It's a fun experience, but the coolest thing about October is where they weren't from the same teachers. They weren't the same positive office referrals, and they weren't the same kids. You know, I had kids from all different grade levels for a multitude of things, and it also... We were able to hit on all three of our pillars because we're working under the family tradition and excellence. And there was a kid... You know, there were multiple kids in each of those different pillars. And my own Millie was on there, which is, you know, whatever. I'm reading hers like she's any other kid in my office, and I'm not, you know, making any big deal about it, and I read it. And it was about our, our rough Friday when we went to our advisories just to make sure that our kids were in a good place, you know? And so we were... We were in advisories for a few hours that day, and Millie left her advisory and went to check on her buddy advisory because she's an 8th grade buddy. So I'm reading hers, and it was, you know, just that she did, did a really good job checking on them, letting those kids know everything was okay. She showed up with candy that day, you know, and was just like ready to go. And so I'm reading hers like she's, you know, any other student, and the 6th grade boy goes, "That's true. She's my buddy, and she's awesome." And I was like, "Oh." Then I had to try to not be a mom right there and embarrass her, but it was pretty awesome. So if you want to look across that list, we have some awesome kids doing some really awesome things. Our November spotlight actually just came out today. We had our faculty meeting this morning. It is what is... Who is normally known as Coach Rob Coleman, and he is kind of a under, under, under-the-radar promoter. And I don't know if you've ever walked past his office. He also really likes to jam out and sing really loudly. So this year, morale-wise, he has brought his music to the whole faculty. So if you're on our email list, you're getting songs daily, typically multiple songs to start your day, always with a catchy theme. Sometimes it fits our week. You know, it just depends on what's going on. And so that was brightening a lot of days, and that was fun, and that was new, and everybody was seeing this different side of Rob. But now he has created a challenge and a contest, and he had all of us submit a song that just lights us up. Like, just like, "What makes you happy? Send me your song that makes you happy." So we're like, "Okay." And so now he sends it out, and you have to guess which faculty member matches each song. So he's sending like six or seven out at a time, and it's difficult. Last week was really hard. This week, I thought that they were all Ashley Merzlefs, but... But it's really just... It's crazy, just that little bit and that little bit of healthy fun competition. The morale boost that it's brought to our faculty has been awesome. And today, whenever we nominated our spotlight members, it was a landslide. Like, you know, he just took the cake because everyone is greatly appreciating his efforts and his time. And he's actually even said he'll give up his plan time to whoever, whoever wins the contest, he'll come teach their class for an hour. And so he told me he needed me to win so he could be in charge. So I'm like, "All right. I don't think I'm carrying that weight, though." All right. We also had Red Ribbon Week, just like the rest of the district. This is kind of strange for me because while everybody is here on Red Ribbon Week, like living Red Ribbon Week and doing all these things, I'm everywhere else. I'm all over the county. So I typically am the one who's documenting all over the building, so I don't have a ton of pictures from the middle school from Red Ribbon Week. But our kids were all in, celebrating, observing what Red Ribbon Week is. They were able to have a guest speaker come in as well, and I was told he was exceptional and funny and real. That happened to be a day that I had to take off because my, my parents had some tornado damage. So I wasn't able to, to hear him, but I was, I was assured that he was a wonderful speaker. And then we just have what's ahead. And really and truly, this is a good time of year that if you want to see our creative arts at work and all the great things they do, check your calendars, start putting some of these things on there. We do have our fall play this Sunday at 2:00 at the pack. We have our winter band concert and our winter choir concert coming up, and those are also at the pack. And I think that's the end of mine. You guys are writing down dates, so I don't want to skip forward to double-check.
Well, while you finish, I want to mention that Mrs. Huffman is our Red Ribbon Coordinator for the county. She works with the committee and heads that and does a fantastic job, so that's why she's out, making sure everything runs the way it's supposed to.
It's a crazy week. Thanks.
It's a very busy week, but she does a great job with that, so I did want to make sure you were aware of that and recognize her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the assistant principal at the high school. Dr. Boyd asked me to do this this evening. He is attending our fall recognition ceremony for cross-country cheerleading and volleyball, I think, was tonight. So that's where he is. So he and I worked through this together. I'm going to... I have notes. If I can figure out how to get that video to play... Do we have a mouse, Dr. Flee?
It doesn't work.
Doesn't work?
Can you do your own mouse?
Yep.
Okay. This is not the one I normally use when I'm in the... Okay. This is our choir at the MAA conference performance that we can listen to. It's a nice way to open it up. They do an amazing job. If I can minimize it. There we go. There we go. Okay, moving forward to some of the other photos we have up there. The picture on your left is a pig heart in Ms. Curtin's anatomy and physiology class. Dr. Bosler from the hospital, cardiologist, came in, and I think when I was in the room, there were three or four stations. I don't know if you made it to the room, where he was going from station to station and basically walking... going from station to station and basically walking the students through the heart. It was amazing to watch, and it's amazing to think that people have that level of expertise to save lives. It was a very engaging lesson for the students. It was a neat experience for them. The picture on the right is of Devon St. Clair, who's actually a graduate. He is running for the Mineral Area College Cross-Country Team, and he competed in Georgia last weekend, and he earned All-American honors as he finished 12th out of 140 runners. And then, week prior to that, I believe, his brother, Nathan, finished 19th out of 170 at the state cross-country meet, so he earned all-state honors. So those boys are doing really well with their running. In October, we held our College and Career Fair. I have to 100% give a shout-out to Mrs. Sikowsky, Mr. Toomes, Mr. Draper, our high school guidance counselors, and Ms. Brimfield, the registrar. They really worked hard to make this a good experience for the students. Sixth hour, we had the junior class attend. Seventh hour, we had the senior class attend. Then from 3:00 to 4:00, we fed all of the participants who were there representing their college or business. And then from 4:00 to 6:00, we opened it up to parents. We had 15 colleges there and 20 businesses. So for the first time out, we call that a success. Mr. Toomes is already thinking about ways to make it better next year, just to improve some more parent involvement. It was a neat experience. We have congratulations this month. We, too, have positive office referrals, which I'll list in just a moment. We also have our Rotary Student of the Month, who actually received his honor today. It's Christian Kiefer. And normally, I think we have a picture of the teacher he selected to take with him to the Rotary Meeting. That was Mrs. Uzzell. So she was able to introduce him today at our Rotary Meeting. And then our Elks Student of the Month is Paige Hook. And then when you look at our list of positive office referrals at the high school, we, too, are exploding with those, and it's so awesome to see John and I, or Dr. Boyd and I, we have a really good time with the students, because they don't know why they're coming in the office, and they see both of us sitting there. So their faces are funny, and the parents' voices are funny when we call them. So our office referrals of the positive nature are John Vens, Ethan Maloney, Abigail Bowman, Zoe Cook, Gabe Parker had two, Trinity Davenport, A.J. Prudent, Cheyenne Gek had two, Elena Chandler had two, Lindsey Crump, Brenna Weiner, Jamie Yankley, Drake Dillinger, Allison McRory, Lieutenant Carter, Ashley Mendoza, Stella Cox, and Haley Wheeler. And then we also had Bryce Tullinger. He received the Missouri All Collegiate Orchestra honors. The Social Studies Department opted to do a walking tour of downtown St. Genevieve. The social studies teachers took those students down. They walked around downtown. During the walk, Dr. Rook was playing his fiddle, which was a really neat thing for them to hear. It was guided downtown, and they pointed out places of historic value and with unique architectural designs. This was the first St. John High School walking trip to the New National Park since we've been recognized as that in St. Genevieve, and I certainly think it was well worth the time that the kids spent down there, learning about our history of St. Genevieve. Other great things we have going on at the high school. FFA received third at the District Grasslands Competition. FCCLA attended the Regional Six Conference in Cape. The President and Secretary of FCCLA also made a donation to the Southeast Missouri Violence Council, which you see in that bottom picture with Officer Clark. And we, too, just recently named our Teacher of the Month at the high school. It was Mrs. Halaie Follett. I'm sure Dr. Boyd's explained to you the process of this. We send those out to the students. They submit their nominations. It's been overwhelming, the number of nominations he's received that we get back. Then from there, he works his magic and takes out the names, and we take it to our Principal's Advisory Group, and then they dial it in and actually do the selection of the teacher. So this week, this month, I'm sorry, it was Halaie Follett. She always goes in-depth when she teaches and encourages us to ask questions. She's always as willing to help us with any questions or problems we may have. I know if I need help with an assignment, she will always be willing to help, even when things outside her curriculum. She always has a positive attitude toward us, even when the class gets tired of schoolwork and are struggling with their day in general. She is incredibly kind and will go out of her way to make sure we are all okay. And that's a very good summary of Mrs. Follett. So that's what's been going on at the high school.
And the last thing on... Sorry, let me get this. And the last thing on the Superintendent's Report this month, we have earthquake, emergency exit, fire drill summaries in your packet. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have unfinished business, and the first item is the Instructional Program Presentation from the second grade.
Yes. They have submitted a video, so let me get that going. Are you?
Hi, I am happy to present some of the exciting things we do with our second-grade curriculum. First, here are our teachers. At St. John Elementary, we have Ms. Vate, Mrs. Vioxx, Mrs. Thompson, who co-teaches with Mrs. Brown from our Special Education Department, Mrs. Heverly, and Ms. Tullinger, who are in our transition room together, and Mrs. Rock. At Blimpstall Elementary, we have Mrs. Byington, Mrs. Gek, and Mrs. Palmer. We use many instructional tools to help our students grow in reading, like, listen to How Good Readers Read. They practice building their stamina when they read to cells, and even when they meet their goals, they get to go to the book that meets the machine. We use a variety of online programs to help boost our student achievement. We use some in math, and phonics, and in reading. During phonics, we're helping our students learn how to spell difficult multi-syllabic words, along with reading them. So it is helping them in a wide variety of ways. They can go online and build words, and we also have kits that we practice building words. This is the second year we have utilized this program. This year, at St. John Elementary, we're able to have an intervention classroom for our struggling readers. It's where they can get caught up. It is a smaller classroom size. They do many small group activities, and they are trying to meet them on their level to help bridge the gaps. In writing, we do many different genres of writing, including some nonfiction. Here in the picture, you can see that we were writing about bats, and we also do a personal narrative. Guided reading is used daily to help us instruct students in small groups based on their independent reading levels. We work on fluency, accuracy, and comprehension skills, wanting them to be good, independent readers. In math, we choose to do many hands-on activities to keep students engaged in learning. This includes technology programs, food, and outdoor lessons. In science, we find many ways to explore real-life science using hands-on lessons and things around us. To help students have a better understanding of social studies, we make connections that relate to the topic in our real life, like mapping where we live. For me, on the map, we talk about how we live in St. Genevieve as our city, our state is Missouri, we live in the United States, and the United States is on our planet Earth. We continue to incorporate the Seven Habits during lead time, as well as recognize our students who show great leadership. The next few slides are how we celebrate the seasons together and make our school-year memories. I hope you enjoyed some of the amazing things we do in second grade.
And that is the second-grade presentation. It was on my list of items. I'm not sure why it's not on your agenda, so I apologize for that. I just noticed it. We will do third grade next month. We'll continue. We're going to do these every month like we have pre-COVID. So I apologize that it got missed on the agenda.
Next item under unfinished business is procedure for annual school board election.
Yes. The annual school board election will take place on Tuesday, April 5, 2022. The expiring terms are Mr. Terry McDaniel and Mr. Richard Rudloff. Filing opens on Tuesday, December 7, at 8:00 a.m. It will be held. Filing will be conducted at district office, and there on the right of this slide, I have the address and the phone number. Filing takes place during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, when there's not a holiday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Filing will not occur on days the district office is closed due to inclement weather or on December 23rd, 24th, or 27th. The district office will be closed on those days for holiday, the recognition of holidays. Filing will end on Tuesday, December 28, at 5:00 p.m. This is a shorter timeframe than prior-year elections. The legislature, the Missouri Legislature, last year shortened it to a three-week time period. I did want to point that out, because, you know, I know people are going to notice that it's shorter, but this is... We're being told that this must happen. I thought this would also be a good opportunity to make the public aware that there is a push in our Missouri legislative system to move board member elections to November, and I think kind of force those running for the board to either declare a Democrat's or a Republican status. We are not a political entity, so I do not understand this push. It's interesting. It's really kind of fired up probably in the last year. And the one person that I would always go to to discuss this and who I knew was on my side was John Stupi, and I miss those conversations. So I just wanted to make the public aware. There is a push in our Missouri Legislature to do that. I'm adamantly opposed, because we're a public school. We're to educate all children, and it doesn't matter what your party affiliation is. So that's my little stance there. But back to the procedures for the annual school board election. They are all outlined right there. If you have any questions, I will try to answer those, but you do need to make a motion and approve these, or discuss them and amend the motion.
I'll move to adopt the following resolution. Be resolved, Board of Education authorizes an election to be held on Tuesday, April 5, 2022, to fill two three-year terms as Directors of the St. Genevieve Board of Education. Furthermore, the notice of the election certification of candidates shall be submitted to the county clerk in accordance with state statutes.
Second. Got it? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and I just want to support Dr. Fleeg's statement. I think we all have our own beliefs, but sitting up here, it's just about what's best for kids, no matter what side of the political spectrum you're on.
Nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under unfinished business, is modified quarantine guidance for students.
Yes. The next two items we've discussed every month since school started, so we will continue to discuss them and review the data. Up until today, I think we had zero positive cases primarily, but today we did see a little bit of a jump, which has caused, I think, our numbers... Let me pull it real quick. I think we're to four positives throughout our entire district and 14 quarantines, which is still much lower than where we were at in early September. So my recommendation at this time would be to continue to use the modified quarantine guidance for students, and then review it again next month at our December meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the continued use of modified quarantine guidance for students. This decision will be reviewed and discussed at the next regular open meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Rule call David Bova, yes. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Geraldine Diesel?
Yes.
James Kirshner?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Richard Rudloff?
Yes.
Terrence McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Next, under unfinished business, we have face covering requirement.
I'm also going to recommend this month, based on that data, that we continue to strongly encourage face coverings for all students and employees, but continue to require visitors to wear them when they come on campus during school hours.
I'll make a motion to approve the continued use of strongly encouraging face coverings for all students who are close to campuses during school hours. Visitors to these campuses during during school hours will continue to be required for face covering, and this decision will be reviewed and discussed at the next regular open meeting.
Second. Got the second. I have a motion and a second. Rule call David Bova, yes. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Geraldine Diesel?
Yes.
James Kirshner?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Richard Rudloff?
Yes.
Terrence McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Next, we have new business. See none? That takes us to... Mr. McDaniel.
Under revised Missouri Statute 64021, I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with closed record and a closed vote after a short break, under purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disbanding, or providing of particular employees, and scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identified individuals. Individually identified personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, except that this exemption shall not apply to names, positions, salaries, or length of service of officers and employees of public agencies once they are employed and such, and the names of private sources donating contributing money to the salary of a chancellor, president, and all public colleges and universities of the state of Missouri, and the amount of money contributed by the source.
Second. Motion, let me... Eric, you got a second?
Yep.
Rule call David Bova?
Yes.
Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Geraldine Diesel?
Yes.
James Kirshner?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Richard Rudloff?
Yes.
Terrence McDaniel, yes. Motion carries 7-0.